Winfield Caldwell.
Ross.
Here.
White. Taylor.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Baxter.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Height.
Here.
And Witcher.
Present.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. I invite you to rise for the prayer and pledge to be led by Councilmember Ron Harris.
All right, here's the prayer. The Lord, we stand here tonight, Lord, as public servants and citizens of this great city. We pray, Lord, that you will be with us as we guide the direction of this city and this community and this whole area, Lord. We pray, Lord, that you will advise us to help us to grow this community safely with fire and police and as we try to make the decisions that will allow this city to prosper. Please, Lord, be with us in these endeavors. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Second. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor. Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Thank you very much. Is there any communications need to be pulled? How about a motion?
So move.
Second.
On the motion on communications.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
We don't have a presentation organized, but Margaret Boyd Owens with Shore College is here. Margaret, we're so glad you're here. Do you want to come up and tell us, come to the microphone and tell us what you're doing and what your group is? And this might be a good opportunity for a quick photo and...
Margaret Boyd Owens, the Entrepreneur Studies Chair for Entrepreneur Studies Department here at Shore College. I have with me in the audience my elite students. Would you please stand, students? We have Ms. Keisha Cobbs, Ms. Tripp, Ms. Smith, Mr. Cobbs, as well as Ms. Guentz. And these are some of our scholars who are pursuing the opportunity to have their own business, and in fact, some of them do. So this evening, we brought, as we have done last year, bringing the students out so they can see the logistics of how business is conducted in the city and the process as we go forward. So we are honored to be here and thank you for the welcome invitation as well.
Great. Are y'all going to stay for the meeting?
Yes, we are, sir.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. If Ms. Whitby was here, the first thing she would tell you is be sure and get your business license and make sure that we know who you are and where you are and what you're doing. So anyway, we're glad you're here and we're certainly impressed with the job that you guys are doing at Shore College. What a great turnaround and it's certainly a college that we're all very proud of. And be sure and tell my good buddy, Oh Jerome, that I said hello, will ya? Okay, let's go into new business.
R-17185, Councilmember White.
Please call it.
A resolution. A resolution accepting a license and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a community garden license agreement with North Little Rock School District for Pike View Early Childhood.
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher. R-17186, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain city-owned items and other equipment as surplus, providing for auction thereof.
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Question, Ms. Ross.
I was just gonna say, Ms. Fields, could you kind of explain? I had a question on this, why the AMP was listed as the leasing? Well, hurry it up. I'm ahead of ya. Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Hold on just a minute. Mr. Billings in the back. Will you make sure that I get a copy of that?
It's hot in here.
Mary Beth, come to the microphone real quick. You know, this program that we started three years ago, and Debbie, I'll certainly give you credit because it was at your urging that we did this, has been so successful. Tell us where we are since we started this program.
By the end of the year, we'll have so half a billion dollars' worth. That's just a little over three years. And that's thousands of items. We've had at least 400 and something auctions, and some of the auctions have 30, 40, 50 things in them. So we have about a million more things to sell, as you can see on this one. So we're getting rid of things and we're getting money for it, so that's good.
You know, we used to average about 60 thou-- we'd have one auction a year and bring in about $60,000. So in three years, that'd been 180, and now we're at 500. So we've gone from 180 to 500, so...
To me, the beauty of this too is you're not stockpiling this stuff every year and you're not having to prepare for the auction and have the manpower for the auction. So it's a huge savings that was not even included in the profit from the sale.
Department has to bring in things out from 10 years they've had stores. So we're getting further back into their buildings, you know, things that they found on the roadside, you know. And so we're just selling all that stuff to get rid of it, to clean up their places too. So it's good. And it helps the person who's buying it, hopefully.
Good deal. Mary Beth, you're doing a good job with that. Thank you. Did you have something, Mr. Baxter?
No, it's fine.
Okay, 187.
Okay, R-17187, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution endorsing purchase and sale agreement for 600 main building horizontal property regime.
Second.
Ms. Ross.
Now, could Mrs. Fields explain why AMP is listed as the leasing even though they're paying a third, a third, a third?
Their third is going to be paid in rent. The Downtown Development Board actually owns the property and is going to construct the building, and AMP will have a long-term lease to purchase. Once the indebtedness is paid off, then AMP will own their floor of the building. The reason for structuring it that way is because AMP does not have the ability to borrow money, whereas the Downtown Development Board does. Also, city council members on this one, there is a mistake in some of the language of it. It's just a minor mistake, but the resolution references the Arkansas Automobile Association, and it's supposed to be the Arkansas Automobile Dealers Association. So if one of you all would be as kind as to move to amend that to reflect the proper party, I'd appreciate it.
So moved.
Thank you.
Right on amendment.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Second. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Please call it.
R-1718, Mayor Smith.
A resolution appropriating funds for the construction of the downtown plaza.
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Question, Ms. Ross.
Yes, I just, you know, I keep hearing these things. People are saying, you know, this is the sales tax. This is not-- could you explain that these funds are not funds from the sales tax that was voted on, recently voted on, that goes into effect January the 1st, as far as the funding portion of this?
Absolutely. The money, the new penny won't be coming in until March. This is old money. We've been saving about $2 million of it over the last five years. The last three years, we've been trying to be very conservative with our capital money. And now that the McCain Mall, McCain Mall, McCain Overpass is completed and we have to, we don't have to save any more money for that project, we have plenty of money in that account. And so it's really 15, 16, 17 money that we've saved over the years to pay for the plaza. So we're really excited about the plaza, and as most of y'all today saw the announcement on the grounds that First Orion Corporation is bringing their international headquarters to the east side of our plaza. So the things that we're doing are certainly working, and they're bringing jobs and economic development to our city. And so I'm excited about this and I'm glad we can pay for it with old money, by money that we saved by being good stewards of the city's money. Question.
Okay, and talking to Ms. Scott today too, the money from the special projects infrastructure fund, there's a possibility that we would not need to use this 1.4 because we still have property that we have not sold down here, that if it's sold, like the grand opening today, the funds for it, or any other property that we sell can be used towards this correctly?
Yep.
Is that...
Absolutely.
Because that's what I'm just saying. So it's possible that we won't need to spend that money out of that special projects.
And there's a real good chance that we're going to come in under budget. This is, I think, is high budget and with a, it's almost got a half a million dollar contingency in it. So I've got confidence in our contractors. I know them well. I watch their work, and I think they can come in under budget.
Okay, one more question.
Okay.
Okay. Now, this is capital funds. These are not funds that could have been used for salary. This is the...
Exactly.
I just want to make that clear, you know, because I know that our employees are not getting a raise this year. We are fully funding the insurance, but, you know, some people look at this and say, why didn't the employees? But this cannot be used for salaries. This is strictly for capital.
That's exactly true. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher. R-17189, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution appointing Amy Fields to the office of North Little Rock City Attorney.
Second.
Oh, come on. At least one question. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Amy, thank you for agreeing to serve. As you know, you've got big shoes to fill. But we're, you know, we have anticipated this, and Jason told me a year ago, he said, "She's the smartest lawyer I know." And if it comes from Jason, then I take it as the gospel. So Amy, we're glad to have you. You'll get used to us and we'll get used to you. And so let's just keep doing good things. Jason, we're going to miss you, buddy. Okay, next one. Hey, yes, absolutely.
Okay, R-17190, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Pulaski County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 801 Curtis Sykes Drive, also known as 1506 North Vine Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
So move.
How about a second?
Second.
Call a public hearing. Anybody here to speak on 801 Curtis Sykes Drive, aka 1506 North Vine? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher. R-17191, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with the Pulaski County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, as a result of grass-cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
So move.
Second.
Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on grass-cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher. O-1785, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 8950 to reduce the increase to the North Little Rock Advertising and Promotion Lodging Tax 1/2%.
First reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
I was gonna have a question.
All right, on the motion to suspend.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
This is my question.
Say yes.
Can I say yes this time, huh?
Yes. Oh, I don't know about that.
No.
I would probably abstain.
Okay, then if I can say yes now, then I'd like to have the honor of, after Mr. Witcher votes, to make a motion that we adopt this. Can I do that?
You got an opinion on that? I mean, he had to abstain before because of his employer.
The question is, is when the action is occurring, do you have a, you know, a pecuniary interest that can be adversely affected? I can't answer that question for you. I think at the time, there was the concern that you did. I don't know if that concern still remains.
It does. It does not. It does not remain.
If it does not, if there is no pecuniary interest that could be affected by the outcome of your vote, then you are free to participate.
You're not employed with him anymore?
Take your position.
Make my motion.
But I don't see a conflict there.
Oh.
Yeah. Go for it.
Okay. Well, did you vote? You voted no?
I had to vote.
We're waiting on your vote.
This is on the...
Suspend the rules.
Who's on first?
Yes.
Question.
I'd like to have the honor of making a motion that we adopt this ordinance.
Would you like to co-sponsor it?
Yes.
And would Mr. Taylor, who's also on the visitors, would you like to co-sponsor it?
Absolutely.
I asked to be added a long time ago too, so I would like to co-sponsor. And then I have an amendment.
Okay. We got Charlie, Debbie, and Maurice are co-sponsors with me. Your amendment?
My amendment.
In the third recital clause, at the very end, it says, "For a total of 3%, referring to the last action on October 23rd, 2017." That should say it was a total of 4%. That's what we did on October 20th. So the number 3 should be replaced by the number 4 in the third whereas clause.
Okay, we got an amendment by Ms. Ross. How about a second?
Second.
On the motion to amend.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Okay, how about a motion to adopt?
So move.
That was what I wanted, yeah. Motion to adopt.
Okay, Charlie made the motion to adopt.
Made it. Second.
Okay, on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher. O-1786.
Thank you.
Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance defining economic development services to be professional services under Arkansas law, repealing ordinance number 8756.
What is it?
How about a motion?
Suspend the ratings.
Second.
Okay, a motion to suspend the readings and then I'll explain it.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
All right, what this is, counsel, go ahead. You explain it.
So as you know, we were involved in the lawsuit with, you know, City of Little Rock and over economic development things. And that rolled on for a while until the voters of Arkansas approved a constitutional amendment endorsing programs for economic development. The legislature met. They enacted statutes that regulate economic development services and economic development projects. We had previously defined economic development consultant kinda, but it didn't clearly match with the statute that is effective as of August 1st this year. So what is defined under Arkansas statute is economic development services. So what we're doing is changing our definition to meet the state's definition. So it's still going to be a professional service. We're still going to go forward, but it's going to meet cleanly with the state definitions.
Okay, we're just, we're matching the state laws, is all we're doing.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Ross.
So when we send out an RFQ for economic development services or whatever, will those be brought to the council? Will we see those? How does that...
Can, yeah.
I mean, we...
I mean, it's out right now. I don't know when it closes. Sometimes soon.
But so you follow the same thing that we always do for professional developments. Wherever we're hiring architects, engineers, anything like that, there is a committee that meets. We receive the responses. The committee reviews them according to the advertisement, and then they're supposed to be ranked according to ability, not according to price. The top three are available for negotiations. You're supposed to start with the top one and then work your way down. If you can't reach agreement with number one, work your way down through the list. And then if you can't reach agreement with the top three, then you have to start the process all over again. So typically, we don't get all of the responses and bring them to city council. Typically, the point in time that it comes to city council is after they've been reviewed, selected, negotiations were successful, then we would come back and present a contract for approval. Under the statutory scheme, every economic development services contract, every economic development project has to be approved by city council. And there are statutory requirements within those contracts that must be present.
So each individual project, then they will have to bring it back to us?
Yes.
That's why I was...
Which sometimes, right, that, which, that can be challenging, you know, especially for more minor projects, but you'll have to be accustomed to seeing those more often.
Term economic development, can you, can you give me an example?
Yes, and really, the definition that's used in the statute, you know, where they talk about, and I cite some of the language in section one, where it's planning, marketing, strategic advice in council regarding what is it we're trying to accomplish, job recruitment, job development, job retention, job expansion. So supervising our property, property that we own, that City of North Little Rock owns, that we want used for economic development purposes, there's, you know, those are services to help us accomplish that task. And then we've got a laundry list of things, 10 different items, that are specific tasks that need to be performed to help the economic development mission of the city. So you can kind of look down through that list and I'll kind of give you an idea of the things that were, that were contemplated when we tried to put this together. And this does comply with the statute.
Okay. Okay, where are we, Caitlin?
We need a motion to adopt.
Ms. Ross.
I just, you know, and like you said, some of these listed that are on there is a quarterly report to the city council on what they're doing as far as the thing. So...
And we met with...
Do we have what we want? Have we already decided what we want in our shopping list of economic development?
Right. I did a lot of work on the statute when the statute came out to kind of break down what the requirements are. A quarterly report is required, but part of it is putting the kind of metrics together that are reasonable for the city to see, to see what is it that we're trying to achieve. And then having kind of measure, when we put the plan together, have measurements of performance with the plan so you know if the plan is working, or if the plan needs to be adjusted, or what needs to be done. So I think that's an important factor, is having a good plan, validating your plan, or invalidating it, because, you know, whatever great plan you put together, you don't know what the result's going to be until you exercise it.
Okay, where are we?
Motion to adopt.
How about a motion to adopt?
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher. O-1787, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance revising and adjusting North Little Rock Electric Department Service Schedule Rights, rates for municipal street lighting L1 and all-night outdoor lighting L4.
How about a motion?
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
On the motion, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
How about, you want to do that, Jason, just a quick, I mean, this is a, give me two sentences. Tells us what we're...
That the, you're narrowing me down. I've been talking too long. You're cutting me down two sentences.
You're getting a little lengthy, yeah.
And I've already used them. So... LED lights. There's new LED lights in the inventory. We're trying to migrate towards all LED lights. We just need to put a rate in effect to handle it. It's not, it's not a rate that's affecting any other of the rates, just the LEDs.
Okay. On the motion to suspend. Ms. Ross.
Oh, this is just a question. You know, we have this rate reduction of 3% in fourth
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R17-88, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance revising and adjusting North Little Rock Electric Department Service Schedule Rates for municipal street lighting L1 and all-night outdoor lighting L4.
How about a motion? So moved.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R17-89, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution granting a conditional use to allow a tire shop in a C4 zone for certain real property located at 5021 Warden Road in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
How about a motion?
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R17-88, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a conditional use to allow a tire shop in a C4 zone for certain real property located at 5021 Warden Road in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
How about a motion?
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R17-89, Councilmembers Ross and White.
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a conditional use to allow a parking lot in an R3 zone for certain real property located at 2013 Share Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
R17-89, Councilmembers Ross and White.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Anybody need Mr. Witcher to explain anything to us?
Roofers.
Second.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R17-89, Councilmembers Ross and White.
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a conditional use to allow a parking lot in an R3 zone for certain real property located at 2013 Share Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second. On the motion to suspend all readings.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R17-89, Councilmember Ross and White.
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a conditional use to allow a parking lot in an R3 zone for certain real property located at 2013 Share Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R17-89, Councilmember Ross and White. Please call it.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R17-89, Councilmembers Ross and White.
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a conditional use to allow a parking lot in an R3 zone for certain real property located at 2013 Share Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second. On the motion to suspend all readings.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R17-89, Councilmember Baxter.
Please call it.
An ordinance vacating and abandoning a certain sewer utility easement located on Lot 3 Cock of the Walk subdivision to the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Move to suspend the readings. Second. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R17-89, Councilmember Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
This concludes new business.
Thank you very much. Let's go into public comment.
Mayor? I don't know if we voted the emergency clause on 85 and 86. Sorry to backpedal on you.
Well, I bet we can go back and do it.
185.
We did not.
I'd like to tell you I noticed that. That was whispered to me.
We're credited. 85.
Okay.
Help we can get, right?
Yes, we did. How about the emergency clause on 017-85?
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher. Thank you.
Okay, public comment. Mr. Ard.
First, we need to thank Benny Key for the food that was provided on Saturday, Veterans Day. It's very thoughtful of him. Now, I'd like to bring up the subject that really gets close to my heart. We got handicapped signs around, and they're not properly marked. And we got people that park in them that don't even need them. And since I got in a wheelchair part of the time, I see a need for them. So, if they can get them properly marked, that might help some. Now, one more thing I had to say. I mentioned several meetings ago, a council member wanted to use the F-word, and it wasn't for--
I'm going to call you out order, Jimmy. What else?
He says it's public. You can do it. I don't think so. I'll deal with it in other ways.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Anybody in members of the city council have anything for the good of the order? Mr. Taylor?
Just one thing. Just want to say, Jason Carter, thank you, sir, for all your service. You'll be missed. You provided great guidance and great leadership in this city, and we're sure that the comment that you made for our new city attorney doesn't come light. So, I know that this must be absolutely true. So, we're going to welcome her and embrace her, and we're going to move forward. We're going to do good business in the city of North Little Rock.
Amen. Here, here. Mr. Height?
Just got a quick attaboy for Danny Dillon down in our traffic department, sign department. I recently had a request from a resident. We all know who that is, but I don't know if I was to tell you her name. But anyway, they wanted us to do something about the sign marking Summers Avenue over on, off of Warden. So, Danny put up a nice, if y'all have driven down Warden lately, there's a nice big sign down there showing where Summers Avenue is. And I use Warden Road almost every day coming home from my car dealer that I drive for. And I've been looking for Hideaway Pizza or the Mega Market. Now, I can find Summers Avenue. Danny did a good job putting that sign up for us, so.
Danny does well.
He picked it up out of the wood, yeah? Yeah, well, I knew where it was, but, because I knew where Hideaway Pizza was.
Anybody else? How about a motion?
I'm at it.
In a second?
Second.
Motion, second. They adjourned.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
We adjourned. Margaret?